All right, we'll go ahead and call them in your order Henderson City Council be looking for the motion on the minutes. Second.
Second.
Say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. All right, any requests to appear before the council? Metro net proposal. Is there gonna be a? Oh, he's on.
Good evening. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Mark Haygood, I'm with with Metronet, we are a fiber optic company that's in the process of building out, overbuilding a number of cities in southeastern Minnesota. We have built out Rochester, it was announced recently, do Mankato and North Mankato Center. And we're interested in talking with you all about going ahead and bringing our services and our network to your community there in Henderson. Um, I, and I apologize for doing this by with Zoom, yes.
Remote.
Excuse me? Hello?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, well, Metronet, we're interested in going ahead and building out your your community. Uh, we would go back and build out with fiber optic networks to virtually every home and business in Henderson. Uh, so we're doing this in a number of communities across southeastern Minnesota. Excuse me. And what we've got before you all this evening, and it's John Jensen, who was the president of Jaguar Communications. I know has been in communication with Lon and some others there. Uh, Metronet acquired Jaguar Communications last summer, I mean, I get closed in July. And we're using Jaguar footprint to go back and expand across, you know, your part of Minnesota. What we're looking for is is to go ahead and talk to you all about building out of your community. Uh, bringing state of the art, uh, internet video as well as phone services. And to talk to you about how we could do that and how this Henderson could work with us to do that. Uh, I believe that we've gone back and it may be Lon have provided him a presentation that shows just some highlights of on some history of Metronet. And what we're doing. Also, before the the council tonight, I believe, is a letter agreement for Metronet. To to talk about how we would want to work with with the city there. Do you all by chance have that that presentation in front of you or or what?
Yes, we do.
They've got the presentation. I don't know if you have been talking to your attorney. She has been talking with our attorney and they redlined that agreement up pretty good. I don't know if it's done yet, so the city council has not seen that.
It, I've I've seen the redlines and obviously are the the Metro attorney's been working with the city attorney to do that and to answer uh, some of your and your questions and concerns. Um, obviously, you all got it to 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 review that, and I don't know what action you plan to take tonight. Uh, but once again, we would, you know. I I think it'd be easiest and and these these Zoom meetings are awkward, to say the least. Uh, if you've got questions, why don't you go ahead and ask those and I'll do my best to answer those. Uh, to to what you understand who we are and what we're planning to do.
So, my understanding is that basically you've just acquired Jaguar and wanna finish building out the network throughout town? And that's pretty much it, right?
Well, it is, and we'll go back and and expand services, but in a sense, in a gist, that's correct. Uh, we would go ahead and expand and and provide, uh, we would build out the 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 city. Uh, we would place new fiber optic cabling, uh, where their utilities today are are aerial, we'll do them aerially. And where they're underground, we'll place them underground. Uh, we will position those in front of every business and home, uh, so that that we're prepared when people sign up for Metronet Services. Uh, we'll go back and install into those those premises and provide services. Uh, once again, it's a state of the art services, something you're not seeing there in your community today. Uh, our services are one thing is that they're 100% fiber optic. Uh, you're not sharing your your capacity and services with any any of your neighbors, if you will. Uh, fiber optic, individual fibers are dedicated to your home, uh, with potentially up to to one gig of connectivity down and up. It's symmetrical service. It's, um, uh, what this does for you is that the most of what you have now in that city most likely is our asymmetrical services. And also shared, uh, where you may have the limits of maybe 50 meg, you know, download and free meg upload. Uh, we will be able to provide 100 down, 100 over, all the way up to, um, uh, one gig down and one gig up. Uh, that that up upload speed is very important when you're doing, uh, distance learning and remote officeing and such as that. That we're building out is that using the Jaguar footprint as a as a starting point to to build out and provide these services, uh, really to all of your your citizens there. Uh, what we're doing and you all will see a a letter agreement that sort of explains what, uh, Metronet plans to do in Henderson. And is looking for you all to to work with us to accomplish that build out in a a timely, efficient and safe manner.
Okay, yeah, no, thank you, I, you know, I think we've been down this road a couple of different times in a couple of different formats. So I think we understand kind of what you're what you're referring to and talking about and those kinds of things. Now, outside of not having the agreement, which we don't, we heard from Lon that there is one and there's some redlining through it and those kinds of things. Conceptually, um, does anyone have any like hard passes, hard stops or reservations? About what what they're talking about?
Question, so on the standard pricing, the pricing will be good for a year, then what will it be like the second year? I don't want it to be where some companies, you pay one price one year and the second year it goes up considerably?
Well, a couple of things that Metronet does that's that's probably different than you're used to now is that, uh, we will go ahead and guarantee prices for a period of time. But our customers do not have to sign a contract, so the customer can go back and and buy those services, if you will, one month at a time. Uh, I believe in in Minnesota, right now Rochester, we're probably offering, um, you know, this 500 meg down and up for, uh, $59 a month. Uh, I believe we would go back to commit to offering that price for 24 months. And once again, we would commit to those prices, but the customer doesn't have to commit to buy the. In terms of a of future price increases, it's what you'll see is that, uh, we'll end up having standard pricing really all across the, uh, your south central Minnesota, so you'll be seeing the same pricing most likely that shows up in Rochester and Mankato, et cetera.
Does anyone have any other questions for? Yeah, yeah, that's basically what he's saying is that you don't have to sign a contract, they're good for at least a year. I actually think the the context of pricing is, uh, an outside, that's a totally separate issue than what and what he's kind of asking to do. You know, that one pricing is more of a individual decision and that, you know, and and stuff like that, but they're gonna have to be competitive. And based on on what what's here, um, it is, but.
If I could add another comment to that also is is once you bring competition into your city, is that actually your other services most likely will go back and and become more competitive as well. Uh, what what was your other areas in Minnesota and everywhere else where we're going to providing these services? What people are seeing are are, uh, uh, much more efficient, faster and better services at a comparable price to what you're paying today.
So I I personally don't have any objection to what he's requesting, however, I have no problem, you know, making a decision in a month after people have had time to just take a look at the agreement here. Um, since we we got it, obviously, just a little bit ago, but conceptually, it's, we we've invited other companies to come and do this. Um, and they said no, so I, I'm not sure. Uh, well, and we had another company said that you can you can pay for your city to be built out. Plus, you can pay for a portion of the county, and we said no. So if we've got a company here who's already here anyway, willing to just cover their own costs. It seems like the best scenario of the the three we've encountered. So, you know, like I said, I don't know that we need to take any action today, just because we just got this and you may want to take a look at a little bit more, but but conceptually, I'm I'm on board with it.
Your biggest questions that are different than your agreement that you have not seen in what else? Everybody in your other places, you do franchise fees and this this is basically their their request, their initial request, I believe, and everything. And that that there would, there would be some other fee on the back end or whatever, but that that probably would lead to. But there's there's just some things in the agreement, I I don't think essentially, having, you know, heck, having competition is not the, it's it's a really great thing. But how you turn the turns with that agreement compared to what you've done with, uh, with, uh, MediaCom, Frontier, XL, Northwest Gas. And, uh, and what, depending on how you do this, what doors that opens as far as unraveling those fees that you're charging probably where you're.
Any other disque- discussion or questions at at this particular time?
I'm good with the city attorney moving forward and drawing up an agreement, our franchise agreement that we can talk about at Henderson.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, probably the only guidance I would I would give it, like like Lon said, I I'm not the the legal eagle on this thing. Um, we have existing agreements and it just would have to be consistent. Um, that it doesn't open any doors, we don't intend to open, but that would be for the attorney to look at and advise us, um, in that regard, so.
The one thing that's new here and sure, uh, and let's get how deep you want to go down the rabbit hole to talk about it, is that apparent that, uh, there is, there are apparently clauses that if you have 50 or less, um, subscribers, then there are, the link, your regulations, you can't spend on, there aren't the same regulations that that there are. If there are 50 or more, then it goes for 50 to 2,000, there's different here and all those kinds of things. And again, nothing to do with what they're charging the customers, more so what is the city gonna get out of, out of, out of the deal when it's, when it's done? And they're gonna give one company a competitive advantage, one to the city compared to.
Yeah, that makes sense.
If I could comment on that for a moment and I will give you, leave you all for your own conversations there. Is that, uh, what we got in the city letter agreement that your attorney has been working with 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 Metronet on is, as I mentioned, is there is a clause in there that talks about, uh, in a sense, that the video franchise there for the city. Is by state law, if there are fewer than than 50 video customers, then there's no need for a franchise. Uh, if when you cross the threshold, when you get your 50 first, up to 1,000, uh, the city would have an ability to to waive that, the need for a franchise or to acquire one. Uh, what we, our our sense and what we're doing in in most cities is that we're finding that the majority of our of our customers are taking, uh, internet and going and streaming over the top of that as opposed to buying a video package. Uh, and we're we're seeing that we, let's say that we get 50% of your your residents as as customers. If our typical take rate is of, is a quarter of that, that, uh, takes video, then we're not yet at the, at the 50 threshold subscribers. Once again, though, what we're doing to do is, uh, we're volunteering to go ahead and pay the the 5%, to collect and pay you all the 5% for our revenue fee on video services that are sold. Uh, that should take away the arguments of any one other other providers that are complaining that we are a competitor of that.
Okay. All right, well, uh, I I don't think we have any more questions for you, um, certainly we've got a few pages to look at and, uh, try and pick it back up next month, um, after we've had time to review it, so, thank you.
Very good, and thank you for your time, good evening.
Yep, thank you. All right, uh.
Why you're on it is to want to get, if you get what he, what they're talking about there, in that they might not have any more than 50 subscribers.
Yep.
But we we get our, we should collect franchise fee off of cable TV, uh, of what used to be the old cable TV. But for streaming and for internet, we can't collect franchise. So, so they might, if they got 140 drops, they might have 240 subscribers. But of those 240 subscribers, a lot of them may be internet and not necessarily apply or or sign up for their, for their video stuff. So, you know, you think, how wouldn't you not get them? Well, you may, you may not, but but I, and I guess in that, that then leads to, to me, uh, MediaCom is an internet provider as well as a cable TV provider too. We never, we never had a discussion with them and if, you know, at some point, they had 250 or 260 subscribers in Henderson. If that's down to below 50, then apparently statute says that, uh, that they can't have franchise. And and they they could go below 50 under video. I'm gonna guess as as well, so.
Okay. Okay. Police chief.
Good evening, everyone. Our monthly police report, um, for the last month, uh, during the last month, police department handled 57 calls for service. One investigation was conducted in reference to child protection complaint, one investigation concluded on assault case and submitted to county attorney's office. One investigation conducted in reference to order for protection violation. Uh, the breakdown of the calls is as such, one assault, one OFP violation, one identity theft, one school related complaint, two child protection adult protection complaints, two juvenile related complaints, one scam, um, one traffic accident report, two noise complaints, two suspicious activities, five traffic stops, uh, one, uh, driving complaint for better enforcement, one parking violation, four assist other agencies, uh, one civil matter, 22 community policing directed patrol, two public assist welfare checks, one ordinance violation, and, uh, other calls, miscellaneous calls. Sibley County Dispatch called called in or was called in, two calls for service for us, uh, on during the off hours, uh, so we handle that later, um, $30 savings for the city. Um, our new full-time officer, Jason Lennox, will be starting on that March 20th, uh, will start, uh, training. Um, everything else is the same, um. Every member of the police department is up to date on their training. Uh, equipment and police supplies, uh, main unit currently I had, uh, on the, on the 17th. That was a 15th, I did that, I had 23,849,000 miles. And, uh, the backup unit had 80,364,000 miles. Um, everything's working. Um, post BCA requirements, um, we're all current on those. Adjusted the sexual assault policy, uh, last month to meet post, you know, post requirements. As far as, um, expenses, um, we going to have expenses associated with equipping new officer. And also, um, from psychological services as a part of the hiring process, the post mandate that every new officer picks psychological test, uh, so we'll be getting those. I will, um, when I get all of them, I'll just present at the next council meeting, but, uh, it's going to be a significant, however, it's gonna kind of wash out because we haven't had second full-time officer getting paid, so it's, uh, probably gonna be washed out. As far as expenses.
One thing, a follow-up to that that I didn't go over with yet, that, uh, those like uniforms and stuff like that that are specific to the officer. Uh, there, we we pay them upfront, but if for some reason they leave through like a couple of years, a year's time, we end, we end up billing them back for that stuff.
Yes.
So, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't go over that, and I didn't go over that with, uh, the new gentleman when he came in, but, uh, I think we, make sure we gotta tell him that, that if he doesn't.
Yeah, we will, we'll answer that.
If he washes out in a year, the chances is, well, we're gonna get back as much as we can give it, we're gonna get back as much as we can.
Yeah, it was, uh, it was explained yet.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, uh, any questions for the chief?
Questions, concerns?
Well, hang on.
I think Janet's there.
Hello, Janet?
Yeah. I don't have anything.
Oh, okay. I thought Jeff, Jeff was reacting like you were doing something over here. Okay. He took a, he took out his earplugs and did whatever, eh, to do what he had, there you go. Okay.
Are the traffic stop citations, are they verbal warnings or what are they?
No, we didn't have any traffic citations this month, it was just horrible. Just wanna add that, uh, you know, for the past, since Alex left full-time, I'm pretty much, uh, working every day just to ensure coverage for the city. So, uh, we had, uh, one of our part-timers was able to come out and work a couple of days, but pretty much, I'm, you know, out there every day, so. Until we, as I said, have second officer come out and we'll be doing training process and then he's gonna be on his own.
Yeah, thank you.
Ah.
Yeah.
I talked him earlier about, uh, you mentioned signage?
Yeah, the signage, uh, if we wanna address it, but I'll probably address it with, uh, Lon, but, uh, we, uh, you know, as far as getting like traffic complaints, traffic enforcement complaints, you know, there's people speeding on such and such, uh, street. By Minnesota law, uh, we have to post signs, speed signs there. Um, there is, I can even, I think, I might even find it here somewhere. But, uh, basically, you know, residential area is 25, but there is another, you know, stipulation there that there has to be a speed posted on that street in order for me to kind of enforce it. And issue people citations, otherwise it's just gonna be thrown out. So we, uh, we need to come up with some kind of.
Need to buy a few signs.
Speed signs, yeah, so.
Okay.
That's, uh, as we've just.
That's something you can determine what mile per hour or what are we gonna do?
Well, I mean, that's the, you know, as I said, the the state statute determines what what the speed limits are. However, you know, it also stipulates that we have to have it posted on the streets. So, um, you know, especially in the residential areas, I mean, that's, uh, uh, we have signs on major streets, but not all of the residential areas have them. Some of them do, some of them don't, mostly don't, so.
Okay.
And, uh, yeah.
And then on North Sixth, I had a group complain to me about they come off Sixth, run North Sixth Street. There is a yield sign there, the first block or block and a half, I wanna call it, coming from the north. There's a lot of kids on that, in that area.
Uh huh.
And, uh, there was a few that weren't too happy about it, but, you know, they sit down there with the patrol car and I've seen it many times. A damn car goes by. But Sunday, I was picking up some sticks, some kid come flying through there, he's probably 150 miles an hour, you know, well. It's, uh, I gotta look, you said there's, I guess I didn't pay attention, how many kids at play signs are down there on that street, you know?
There, there is quite a few, there's quite a few, however, there isn't, and this is one of the examples, there isn't any a single, uh.
Do we have a speed sign there?
No, no. There's no, uh, there's no speed sign on it.
So, question on that, um, when, when you, do you or do any of these folks contact the chief? Uh, and let them know, okay, this, this was a concern I have, it's this vehicle, that kind of thing, do you know?
Well, I don't know if they are, I don't know why they came to me, they should really be calling now.
Right, that, and that's why I'm asking, you know, so, um, because he can't do anything about it. Right. If no one, if if no one tells it, you know, and, you know, and you as this individual councilman or me as a mayor, I mean, we, we've got really no authority to address it at all. E- even as a body, we still delegate, even when we come together, so I just wanted to ask.
Well, the only reason I'm bringing it up is because it's here.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's just, uh, you know, that that statute said for any speed limit under this subdivision, our authority shall erect signs identifying the speed limit. Uh, so, that's.
Yeah.
It's one of those, um, stipulations on that statute, speed, speeds, statutes.
And have, have you had people contact you and say, okay, this car seems to be driving pretty fast down my street?
No, no, not specific vehicles, and I encourage everybody just to call me directly. Through, as you said.
So, so you're open to, hey, if someone sees like a regular appearance like this vehicle, you you're open to those calls? Just, you're, you're cool with that?
In case I'm getting a specific vehicle, you know, in a special license plate, I would contact those people and just, you know, kinda talk with them, I can issue a violation, but at least, you know, represent a concern, let them know. They might wanna, you know, always get in complaint.
Okay.
Such and such, so, so I would follow up on that, of course, you know, if there is, uh, if people can provide me a specific description or location of the vehicle or something like that, you know, that's we, that's, it's kind of just a routine type of, you know.
Okay.
Where, but, uh, but yeah, I encourage people just to call, uh, me or police department directly and with any type of concerns, eating concerns or anything like that, instead of going through the city council members, uh, because then it's just, uh, a broken phone, you know, we're going all around.
Yeah.
I could get more information directly.
Right.
Ask questions and.
For sure.
So.
And address the issue more effectively.
Yep.
We as the council, we determine the speed or?
No.
Or how does that work now?
State statute.
No, state statute, state statute determine the speed limits and, uh, you know, residential areas, it's 25. So, so that's, that's, that's basically speed limit on all those streets. Now, there are some stipulations, if there is, uh, you know, any type of other hazard or something like that, I mean, that has to be, uh, you know, you have to drive politely and without, you know, jeopardizing public safety, so.
So does anybody object to putting a speed sign down there on Sixth, at least on the corner?
I would just recommend that police chief may put signs up where he feels they're needed.
I don't have any issues with signs, but I don't want any residential street in this, in this town to be 45 miles an hour.
No.
It has always been 30, and I really think we need to get a legal opinion on the statute because the implied speed limit in alleys is 10 miles an hour, and I don't see a single city posting that 10 miles an hour. And that's an implied thing in the statute.
Well, I mean, that's not implied, it's just said in the statute.
We have to post every single street at 30 miles an hour, we're gonna be buying a lot of sauce. Because we have a lot of side streets.
Sure, for sure we do.
I don't think we have to do every street, I think it's just to, you know, where we know we got the made.
Yeah, well, and and, you know, in in all fairness to most common good citizens, it's generally just a few people doing it, and that's why if, you know, if, you know, the chief can get that call, hey, gosh, you know, there was this red sedan or whatever, it went, you know, also, it's, it takes about two calls and they're, you know. you know, three lookups, and, and, and he's got an idea, and, and it's generally the same people doing it. Um, but he can't identify those patterns or potential violators and have those conversations unless people are telling. So, and so that's why I would, I would just encourage people to, you know, even, like, so if it's a water issue did, you know, did you call, did you call on, you know, or is it's a police issue, oh, did you call Dimitri? That, because they're the people that really are the delegates of the council to take care of these things, so um, because I think most people are good, but you're, there's a couple of folks who just are regular offenders, if you will, of the piece, so.
Well, the thing is with that is that uh, if the statute specifies that uh the speed limit adopted by the road authority, um, having jurisdiction over the residential order, so I don't know if the road authority would be here. There's, if the council is, yeah, then, then the council, I guess, uh, you know, determines that, so um, I'm just, I'm just here to enforce it, basically, but I'm not sure who the road
In my view, North Sixth Street with all those kids running around, it shouldn't be any more than twenty-five miles an hour, that's my opinion. And you do see twenty-five mile, you see twenty mile an hour speed limits in a lot of different places, in different towns. Even twenty miles an hour wouldn't be, you know, I mean, what's your area, you're only going, what, basically six blocks?
So, but yeah, there's, there's, there needs to be some kind of uh speed limit posted, you know, signs there, so maybe enforce it.
Okay. Any other questions, comments for the chief?
So, so how do you wanna resolve it? I mean, you mentioned something about uh illegal opinions, or lay it out, or I mean, you want
Okay, yeah, so, well, in, in, yeah. Or, well, if challenged, right. Yeah, but we don't, we don't know if she's ever had that specific challenge either, I just don't know. Maybe. Be, but, but no, I wouldn't mind getting her, her thoughts on it, like what, what would, on a minimum basis allow her to be able to follow through without jeopardizing her ability to follow through, what's the minimum standard that needs to be met, and are we meeting? Yeah, I, I wouldn't mind, you know, having her take a look at that, sure.
Well, and I would guess, then, if that's the case, if the city truly has regulatory power over that, and I, I I always saw it, we referred that to whatever in state statute, but apparently not, then that, when we're meeting on Monday that should just be another thing I can have her look at, under the traffic section, which I think is section seven, that if we've got, if we've got residential speed limit speeds in our ordinance, it must be in there. I mean, so I don't think we would have to, it's not, it's not like we've never had an ordinance, I mean, we've had ordinances for a hundred and hundred and sixty years, you know, so, so if there's something there, it, it must, it must be in there somewhere. Yeah. I mean, it's gonna, Monday's gonna turn into a more of an interesting thing than, you know, we, we may be, we may just end up skimming over stuff for an hour, if we're gonna do the school board after, I guess, I, because, yeah, that's added, uh, there's some stuff on here that's not on this agenda, but uh there are people talking about doing a wine license, and how, how that fits into our new, you know, into our new codify ordinance, and we've been you know, and Allison has been, I don't know how close, you've been looking at some of those things, but Allison has been going through some of them, you know, the notes and whatever and there's, there seems to be a lot of holes, you know, so how, how we're gonna try to fill those holes, it, it's still, while it may cost some money, it still seems to me like this is the time to fill any hole that we've got because it seems like a lot, but if we, you know, we've done them, we've, we've codified them once, really, since I've been here and so, it's, so they probably, and they probably hadn't been codified probably for forty years before that, so every forty years or so if you, if you, if you break it out that way, and you light up whatever we're paying by forty years, rather than what we're paying this year if the number is not probably the same number that you're thinking about, and it would just seem silly to me that after we get this done, if every month, and that's what it seems like, not the last three months, something that relates to what's in the ordinances, is coming up and if this, if all these things keep coming up, after we meet, after we get this ordinance codified, we've been, we've wasted, for me, a lot of time and a lot of money.
Alright, thank you. City attorney?
No.
City administrator?
But, but she has been, she's been working all day with uh, she worked all afternoon with this uh metro net lady, and then she worked this morning, um Keely Br- Keely Brano has been going back and forth, and we've been talking a wine license, it's been different kind of alcohol, kind of licenses, and we're not ready to bring, you know, the, the uh the uh nonprofit groups aren't ready to bring anything up yet, but uh that, it's been an issue that Allison now has been researching, she researched that most of the morning, uh, and then she went through whatever she could, codifying two codifications, you know, in the, in the prior couple of weeks, so uh she's been, she's been at that kind of stuff.
Okay.
And she does, and she does plan on being there on, on Monday.
Okay.
And that's, uh, if somebody, everybody should have the notes and whatever from that codified ordinance or from that first draft so if somebody's got some specific questions before the meeting, uh, let, let me know so I can get it to Allison, and she can actually take a look at it and see if it's in there or not, but, but I'm finding a lot, when I'm looking at the stuff in the, in the blue copy compared to what our existing ordinances are, is that they really didn't change much, I mean, and some of the things that are kind of questionable in blue sky it seems like they're leaving that, leaving that all to our discretion again anyway, so uh it's gonna take a little bit, and I, I think, I think they're, what they're doing, it looks like, is, okay, you got your standard statutory ordinances over the last however long, the city's added a little bit here, and a little bit there, and a little bit there, and they're not changing any of that little bit here, a little bit there, a little bit there, but, but some of what seems like it either is obsolete or it's something that we've never used, and it just seems like we need to either throw that out or go through it, so this might take a lot longer than what I thought it was gonna take, so. Nice. I'll jump right into my, my report. Uh, levy things, nothing going on in scheduling inspections and whatever for now, signs and repairs, uh hopefully that we get those done by next May. Blacked up stuff off the way till two thousand and twenty-one, compost, uh, those guys are still working on it from time to time up there, and then Allison's finding some scout missions, and they're finding some stuff in the spring. Snow removal, uh, had some complaints on the stuff for Monday, but overall, I think uh I, I, I think Rich Bisten did a good job on getting done whatever what, whatever he had to get done, and hopefully now that wraps it up for the rest of the year, and that Bruce is actually back, and we can deal with any stuff from here on out. Allison's Park, uh, question that I've got on there right now, I've opened up ours, our, I'm trying to get Diane lined up, talking to Stripe, who runs our system, and I opened it, I opened up the reservation parts, and we got a couple of them so far, effective May twenty-first, so I guess if uh, if that seems like a reasonable, I, right now, I've got no staff up there to open up early, I don't know if we're gonna have staff to open up early earlier than that, so from camping anyway, I just assume, keep it that way. I've had people call in on using a shelter, I don't know what we should do with that, uh, we should just let, let people kind of out of sight, out of mind, and let them do whatever, or if we should be more specific on it, or how we should handle it.
Uh, I think you should probably be more specific, and the reason being is people with the COVID stuff are getting together and given the, the ability, they're gonna wanna do an outdoor stuff, outdoor venue. And so you're gonna have multiple groups, or people probably showing up at a shelter unless we're telling people whose it is. You know, like graduation parties, and, you know all those events, those family events that have been stopped for a year, people are gonna try and start doing them this year, and they're gonna think about using that shelter and if we just kind of let it go without any controls, I think we're gonna have conflict. And you're gonna get calls anyway, because they're gonna try and request it, so can, can it be, can it be added to the reservation system, it's just, can't cite one-on-one? And that's how they can reserve it?
Right now, we don't have a fee or anything for it.
Charge ten bucks? And then it just can go right into the system, and take, and then it can manage itself.
What do we do, though, for people who don't reserve it, and it's vacant, and they just show up and use it?
Although we've, if that's the case, then we've at least avoided the conflict. But the, 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 the things that I, I'm trying to avoid is multiple groups trolling, trying to show up on the same day. So the response would be if somebody doesn't do the ten dollar thing, and they're there, and we're not we, we say, we didn't, it just, it just kind of uh moved in, and okay.
Well, I, yeah, I guess in that sense, I would say it's, it's first come, first served, unless you have a reservation. You know, I guess that's another way of putting it, you know?
So when they reserve a spot for camping, do they get anything that says they have that spot?
Yes, they do, yeah, they, yeah, they actually, they, they can, they can print out a little coupon that says, I got site four, or something like this. You know, to do whatever, so, so I guess, yeah, we could do that, we could it's, it, it is just, it would really be another campsite, and we could, we could uh have the people put that out there that you're gonna reserve it, you know, and
Well, yeah, you could just ma- make a sign, say to reserve this shelter, W W W dot whatever. And then that way, if people show up and, and just are using it, and someone else shows up and says, hey, we reserved this, there's at least a sign to validate, hey, we went here, here's our receipts. I apologize, but you're gonna have to go sit in the grass, so.
Yeah, okay, and we could set, and instead of there, like when you're doing a camping thing, it's for a day, but I mean, we could actually, we it, it might get a little cumbersome, but we could do multiple reservations, I mean, you could do like a block of time, eleven to, eleven to three, or three to seven, or something like that.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, you would
And it does, and, and I'm not worried about the money, I'm just saying nominally
No, but, but, but no, I, I like when you said the idea of how is it gonna be, how, how is it gonna be controlled, well then I would, we wouldn't, I wouldn't worry then about somebody calling up here and doing whatever, I would just, I would just put that on the same timeline as this to say after March twenty-first, you can start making resi- and by then, it gives, that gives two months, after March twenty-first, you can start making reservations onto, you know, and how our impression, and I haven't went totally over the stuff now, based on any kind of new COVID rules, but how, how we left it, if somebody signed up for camping is you had to basically sign a waiver, when you're, when you're camping, you're basically saying, I understand all the rules, I don't have COVID, I'm not gonna spread COVID whatever, you know, it's not the city's response, it's basically saying it's not the city's responsibility if you've got COVID up on this site, so yeah, I would incorporate the same thing on the, on, on the shelter then, basically, that somebody have to fill it out, they'd have to figure it all out they wouldn't call here, they'd go on there, yet it'll be, people are, people are not gonna like it right away, because they're not used to it, but it's like anything else, but eventually they, they get used to it, and uh, and then, then it does, it does turn, it doesn't then make us have to have a facility staff person or even deal with any of that, or even have to, have to have special preparatory cleanup for doing whatever, because we just put rules and regulations everything all under the C P S. So, yeah, okay, I'm not saying we'll have it done, you know, that, that's absolutely, we're gonna do it exactly right now, but that'll give time to clean out in the next meeting to do whatever, and I think we got a park tour meeting here, three weeks probably, right, on the fourteenth or something. Yeah, we got, we got another park tour meeting coming up before the next city council meeting, so I don't know if I got it on list or not, but, so, okay, yeah, that'll work. Okay, well, then, okay, yeah, that's Allison's Park, then that comes, the next one I got on there is here and I think we do finally have somebody lined up to do the brickwork and whatever on the side, but uh, what do you wanna do with this area? I got no problem with it, I mean, it's still, as far as I know, inside is still only fifteen, too, you know, it's bigger, it's a bigger, you know, so not only can't sanitize it, we can't control the numbers, we don't, we don't, we're not gonna police it, but I know, you know, so
You know, I'm, I'm okay with keeping it closed. I'm, I, I wouldn't be okay with, with saying it's closed for twenty-twenty-one, but I'm okay with saying it's closed this month and then next month, yep, it's still closed, yep, it's still closed, you know, I, I, just as long as we're able to remove the restriction I'm okay with that, is, you know, we said, so, okay.
Yeah, I would go month by month.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I've had people on this too, and, yeah, basically so then, what I've been telling them, yeah, we haven't talked about it for a couple of months, and we're gonna have it on the agenda, so then what so then, now my response will be, it's gonna be a month-to-month thing, but it's still, as of right now, you can assume that it's still closed until at least May first when, yeah, when we have another meeting, okay, sounds good. Uh, boat landing, nothing, uh, the water guy is supposed to be here in April ordinance we talked about, McGuire Iron, yep, Hopkins Chemicals, both, both appear in April, uh library space, open that or close it?
That's not gonna We didn't talk about it really at the last meeting yet, um, we have a meeting coming up in April. We can talk about it at that meeting.
So push it off till April.
Push it off till April.
Cause the main cause, the, the calls I get the most often are fiasco from uh, from Anderson Township, they're looking for a place to meet, and uh and they really can't find it, so, uh, when I get a few more calls, then I'll just tell them everything, we're still up in the air until May first. Bender Park, um, I tell them the same thing as far as using the shelter, the fields will be open, and they are open before the high school practices start next Monday, uh, at, what in working and talking to Jeff Chris, the A D over there, what he's, what they're gonna try to set up is because we got some city fields, we got some school fields, uh, rather than having the city set rules the school is gonna try to do their own thing, and then basically, basically, that'll save either the rules for the facilities so that if you've got somebody playing softball one place and baseball the other place, you don't, you don't, all of a sudden, in one place you're not treated one way, and then someplace else, some, something else, so we're gonna try to come up with some standard rules, and that should take us that should take us till June first, and then down there, then we're gonna have to figure out just how much we wanna open it. T-ball and things will start probably the end of May, so by the May, the, the, May City Council meeting, we might have to put some things in place, but then maybe the state will have a whole lot of different rules by then.
Oh, I'm sure they will, didn't Governor Walz say, you know, basically, prom's happening and all those things are happening? So, I mean, we'll, we'll end up following it, following in line with him.
It, yeah, they're all, they're all happening, and it's really more than a good it's gonna be just a matter of how comfortable cities are with leaving them happening, with just not doing it. You know, I'm not anticipating, you know, any baseball stuff that I'm doing in any parks. I mean, I think I probably got uh sixty or seventy games scheduled in the last ten days, and nobody said that there's gonna be restrictions, and I'm scheduled all the way out to August, you know, so
Well, I, I think that's because, well, then, uh, President Biden said, every adult who wants a vaccine will have one by May first. So, those who don't, well, they're just as comfortable as the ones who have it, so I think that's why all that scheduling is all open now.
So, so I'm, I saw, so I'm, I'm thinking from a city standpoint, and to the beguiles out of the lead dock, that uh that we're not gonna do any special rules for, for Bender Park, I mean, there might be some I'm sure there's gonna be some new general catch-all signs that you're supposed to put out there, that somebody's gonna develop, but the insurance people are gonna do, but uh
Okay.
So
So. That's it. Okay. City Council, uh, utility. Did the utility folks meet? Okay. Any highlights or just? Twenty-five. That's, that's significant. Um, are, did you guys talk about what it would? Cuz what, what meter are we, how, how old is the technology and the meters we've got? I guess.
That's, these are, these are gonna be all, that's, that's, we're, we're at the end of our life cycle. For uh, how we're doing our reading right now.
Okay.
You know, yeah, when, when we were doing our reading, the drive-by reading, uh, all remote, and we started that fifteen, eighteen years ago. We were one of the first small towns that were doing it that way. So now that's not the way to do it anymore either. All these new meters will be read however we're doing the office. So basically, you're gonna get a meter and. You s- uh, you, you sell your house and you wanna get a reading the day you leave, you're gonna call the office and the office is gonna give you your, your, your reading. So that there's not gonna be anybody that uh is gonna go out and look at anything, it's just gonna be right on.
So these new twenty-five are that way, they're gonna be that way.
So, so they're, so they actually are gonna have, they're gonna be our first uh, and we, and that's where we might. We might go to fifty or even more than that because what we did fifteen years ago or so, maybe between fifteen and eighteen. Uh, we had four hundred and some meters that we had to do and we got a, a typical meter even at that time was like about. Seventy-five or eighty dollars with all the different components to it. Uh, we worked the deal that basically committed to buying four hundred meters over four years and they sold it to us for forty bucks a meter. We, once we're just getting into how this is gonna work, we might do the same thing here where we commit to uh.
Full replacement.
Full, full, full research and plan over three or four, three or four years and instead of, those meters now are like. Three hundred and eighty, I mean, when the sales one came out here about a month ago and looked at what we were paying for meters on these other ones. Said, how the hell did you get that? Well, it's because it's a freaking twelve-year-old deal, you know, that uh, we, we're still, we still. The meters that were, the old, the meters that we got on the other technology are still getting charged what we got, what we got, what the deal that we worked. Fifteen years ago, you know, so now these new ones, I, I kinda like to do the same thing, you know, so they're, yeah. Well, so there might be more than fifty, twenty-five because, well.
Well, it sounds like it's a worthy investment.
It's, oh, but it's, but it's gonna take, it'll take some time to get a, it's more so the time to get, to have somebody to replace them than it is the actual.
So do you have the determination made already which ones aren't working?
Pretty much. There might be one or two that we're missing, but it's, yeah, it's pretty easy to tell when uh, when they got four people and. Their, their balance is zero. I mean, then we can, it's, yeah.
Zero flow.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, we only, we're only going back a year, I mean, so that's uh.
Yeah, well. Kudos to them, I mean. Good for them. Okay. All right, any else?
The minimum on the water though, there isn't for household, there's a minimum charge.
No matter what, yeah, whether, it's, it's different for a business or apartment unit or whatever, but uh, it's ninety-two dollars and something. If you're uh, if, no matter whether you got one person or, or twelve people, if you use zero to one thousand gallons, you're getting that minimum charge. Now, once you get over a thousand gallons, it gets into a different uh, gets into a different number.
All right, anything else in utilities? All right, uh, Park. Got a resolution here?
Got a plan again here.
Yep, there's a plan in there, it looks wonderful.
Color copy didn't work.
That's all right. I get it. It's very pretty, designed by people who really think about this stuff a lot. Um, and it'll look nice when it's done.
You wanna report or you want me to? Free year plan, eight thousand bucks a piece. Um, gonna start as early as we can this year. I want them, did you get a date on? We didn't, don't think it, no, we didn't. Don't think so. Uh, but uh. The, the state's got all, the state's providing all the materials and they're gonna deliver them and do whatever. City has just got to uh, do the works to get them installed. And it's gonna be the bottom, basically the, the bottom areas this year and then work, work their, work their way up. The rest of the two years over the next few years.
Okay.
And then you need to do that resolution, two thousand and twenty-one oh two, which uh, basically, let's just enter into that agreement.
All right, I'll be looking for a motion on resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh two.
I'll make the motion.
All right, got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. All right, uh, fire commission.
Janet's the line.
Yep.
Do you wanna report on that or do you want me to report on it?
Um, you can go ahead and report on it if you want. Since you're there, it'll be first.
So at a couple of meetings, I did toss out that the fire commission was recommending a five percent increase in the operating budget for this year. Um, I did attend the Jesslyn uh annual meeting and the Henderson Township annual meeting. Both of those townships approved their five percent increase. Um, what that kind of basic rolled out to be for Henderson Township is it was uh, six eighty-eight fifty-one. Was their increase, Jesslyn's increase was eight thirty-eight thirty-five. And for the city of Henderson, um, the increase will be one thousand eight hundred forty-five thirty-seven. That's really all that gets reported.
Okay. Any questions? Did we factor in the increase at all?
Yeah.
All right. Do we need to vote on it?
Randy, Randy mentioned that, you know, your, it was already, it was already, I think you presented it a while ago and then they never met for a while.
Right. Do we need to vote on that? All right, uh, in the month, are you looking for a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
All right, you have a motion in a second.
I'll second.
Aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Aye.
Looking for a motion on the bills.
I'll make a motion on the bills with the.
Oh, that's right, yeah, we published it back there. One thing that wasn't on the agenda, I gave it to the bill group, I'm sorry, uh, they handed it out here now. We talked about it, that what immediate goal, um, that change order that, that uh, S E H put together. And Chris just texted, sent this over middle of, middle of afternoon today. Chris is on, is he? Yep. Um, so, and I, I, uh, these guy are. Randy and Amy looked at some of them, they could probably have their, you know, if they wanna summarize the recommendations. They can, or if you want, if you want me to go through them more or.
Yeah, no, what's the, what's the, so what's the general recommendation you guys came up with?
So the general recommendation is that um, the contractor should get, and Amy, correct me if I'm wrong. The contractor should get paid um, these amounts because it was work that was actually done. However, on item number two, which was the pipeline remover, removal. Um, S E H should have known that there was gonna be some, something between the liner and the old pipe. Um, and they didn't indicate that to the contractor, which resulted in the overrun. Um, the other one was item number four, and that is where the sewer comes out of the back alley um, between. North Third and North Fourth Street onto Market Street. Um, S E H again should have been aware of that drop, should have had that in the plans. And they didn't, so the contractor had to adjust and fix that. Our recommendation is that we pay for these, however that we hold. The S E H bill and negotiate um, some of that cost with them since they failed to put it in the plan that they should have.
Seems solid to me. Okay.
Did I get it?
Yep.
No.
So you have to figure what that amounts to, difference on. We're holding and what they actually.
We're not, we're not withholding enough yet because this bill was actually. It's only a little over, what is it, three thousand or something, but it's just, we just, they just came up with this a little bit ago, so there, there's not enough there to. To take, to take out, but it's, but by them not getting a check, it should get their attention so that when. Chris shows up the next time, I mean.
No, but, yeah, I think so. Yeah, um, so we look for a motion on the bills to include that recommendation on change order request.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I got a motion in a second.
Second.
A motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Aye.
Did you oppose or just make a noise? Janet.
No, I'm, I voted, yeah.
Okay, all right. Um, all right, any old business?
But just with that, now that you've got this change order, that I don't know what the number is, we should actually reduce this by. I mean, I think you need to look at it and think about it and see, I think it's more than three thousand dollars. I mean, uh, what of that twelve thousand, I, you know, I don't know. I mean, some of, some of that change order number two. S E H couldn't necessarily know that whole twelve thousand. I, I can, I can, I can live with some of that. But, and like I mentioned to these guys, I mean, I, I talked off to Chris here a few months ago about that. Saying you should, this should be a model project if you ever have another place where they did flip lighting. That you should know now that uh, there's gonna be water in there. So, that probably should be, you know, set up so that somebody can, can think about it. And, and another one on the manhole that he mentioned, they, they had the plans for that manhole. S E H did, they just plain missed the, missed that there was one above there and that drop and stuff was, you know. Was, was it, was, you know, within there. So, that's a lesser amount, you know, I don't, but if it's a lesser dollar amount, I don't know what that is. But to me, it's close somewhere between, I just shoot it off the top of my head, it seems like it should be somewhere between sixty, sixty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, for the, the whole thing, that just seemed like uh, some engineer things that they should help share or eat some of those.
Yeah. All right, any old business? A new business. All right.
I've, yeah. Just one thing here, I had my neighbor, uh, you waived the building permits, right?
Yep.
New construction.
Or remodeling.
What's that?
Henry modeling.
Henry modeling, okay. Kenny Bird bought a couple lots. Was it on third or fourth street down here? He wants to build, possibly build a house down there. She was just asking. She still has to come up and file for a building permit.
Just goes online and fills out a building permit and yeah, yeah, don't come up here, I'll just tell her, go online, figure it out. You know, so uh, and I think people seem like they're using the system, Jeff.
Yes.
It's a very simple system.
Yeah, they just, she just, all she would have to do is go on to Henderson M N dot com and go to, go to that site. And she can either ask him questions or if she's got plans, then she just upload the plans and, you know, and does whatever. She won't get charged anything and we just, the city gets charged whatever the normal building permit fee is. And that's, that's part of what you just paid this, some of what you paid this time, some of this is in there. Well, and then, no, he, he charges based on value too, I mean. The, the fees went up by whatever the fee would have been before, if he would have charged us five thousand dollars for a permit, now it's five thousand and twenty dollars because he's charging. He's charging it a bit of a fee for doing whatever, but some of that might be. But yes, the city will, the city had, you know, yeah, ends up, there, there's no money coming in on the other side. It's just the whole city, the city service providing uh, a building permit.
Right. Okay. That's all I got.
Okay. All right, uh, I'll be, uh, we look for a motion on the minutes, I think there's a park board that you were gonna have. It's not on there, you said the fourteen?
Fourteen, correct. I can't. All right, we just, and also just remember, uh, we need to have the major, we need to have a majority here. For that border review, it is before the next city council meeting, so we need to have three people here. If somebody's not gonna be here. Uh, let us know so that we can get there and right now, Granny's the only certified person. Let's, yeah, I think Janet can't get in till next, in the summer or fall or something. But uh, so Randy will have to be here, then we gotta have two others. And just so, the reason I say you have to have two others, if you don't have to have anything, but if we don't. If we don't have either a majority or a certified person here, then the county takes the book back. So that then the next, in two, in two thousand and twenty-two, there still will be a border review. But it'll be at Gaylor and the Gaylor assessors will conduct it and the city has no uh, has no say in what's going on. Now all the work is, you come here, you can protest your evaluations, the city can say yes or no. And then, then it goes to the county after that.
One other, I guess I didn't, I got one more thing on the new business when I talked to you about when the papers come to town.
Oh, yeah. That was part of the bill.
That's on there.
It's not.
I mean, you got it.
You probably, it's a good time to talk about it right now.
Uh, it's Mill Street, correct? Going downhill, that short stretch down to ninety-three, that's in tough shape. And you can't get the blacked up, it's any cheaper than when they're already here. Uh, gonna get some kind of bid or.
If that's.
Something, and, I mean, if everybody goes for it, but I think it needs to be done because it's so beat up. The water rushes down there, it's gonna start up mining pretty soon.
Ideally, after Steve said that on that one block, I mean, there's only two blocks down there. Ideally, if we had Forest Street between Maines and Mill was done a few years ago, that's basically new. Basically for please I, down to Mill Street. But if we did those other two, those two blocks on the east of ninety-three, then blacked up light would be. Be done with those. So it might be, there is no utilities underneath those, so it might be why. But it's, they would probably put curving better and whatever in England, it's a match to speak, but if it's something you wanna consider, you can have Chris. Get that together for the next meeting. And that again, that would be a change order. Well, Steve is talking east of ninety-three. But you wanna go west, you can go west too.
I'm talking about going up the hill.
Okay, then I miss a new shift.
I don't even, I guess I'd have to look at the other stretch, but going up the hill there, I mean, that short stretch, pretty tough shape.
I, I thought you were going, I thought you were going for more of the uniform.
There wouldn't be, I don't think there'd be any curving better there anymore on that piece of there.
There is someone around the corner.
On top, but the rest of the way down.
Okay, yeah.
Unless that's something that needs to be done, but.
Okay, so yeah, we did that, then, but then we would have left, we'd have two blocks. We'd have the block between ninety-three and North Fourth on Mill Street and we'd have, we'd have the block named ninety-three and uh. And North, the North Fourth on Minnesota Street. That would be all that would be left on that, on that. Oh, and not do the product on that?
Yeah.
Well.
Or are you better off?
Depends how much the number is, the number gets over a certain amount, then you got, then you, then you'd have to put it back out. So, I, I, without knowing what, what the, and I think the number used to be seventy-five, I don't know if it's over seventy-five now. Or, or not, it may be a hundred and twenty-five. Uh, that, that you would have to go out and get, get, get there. Um that that you would have to go out and get 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 there.
I, oh, I I uh I personally uh would rather see that street vacated, the top half of it altogether, and actually combine with the rental property that's just to the north of it, and then you can actually develop that entire stretch into townhomes. Um and then you actually have the bottom you can do just for access, if you needed it, to the, just to the sides of, just there's just an alleyway there otherwise. Um so that's, cause it's a useless street otherwise. So there's no, aside from that one rental, which is a, could be a developmental property, and that that person who owns that as is open to that idea, cause you could really turn that into, instead of one home in a crappy street, you could really turn that into four townhomes. And uh and then vacate the street that is unsafe in the winter or anywhere. So anyway, that's 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 what I've always pictured is the future of that. Um because then you really kind of clean up that entire area, both front and back, uh creating privacy and opportunity without expanding any infrastructure. So. That, no, so so you actually would combine that that parcel with the vacated portion, and then you you literally develop that entire, you know, hundred and fifty feet, because on the top is Orangey's old property, the vacant street, you would actually tape out that house altogether, and you might do a rear entry uh lower level garage situation with front access like row homes on the other side. And so that's how I would envision uh developing, cause then you go from, you go, oh, you go literally all the way from the library, all the way up the hill to, I I don't know who lives there now, but and you you literally take, instead of one home, a vacant lot on the street that isn't very safe, you have probably almost a little over a million, one point two million in real estate, uh generating taxes on no new investment from the city from an infrastructure standpoint. But that's, that's how I've always envisioned uh, you know, leveraging our assets without expanding the community, you know, and that really comes from the concept that, you know, Kelly, when he was here, he never wanted to see the town bigger, but it doesn't mean we can't be better, and this would be better without getting the city bigger, so anyway.
Well, the other thing you gotta consider too, there's a lot of water that runs down that way, but that would have to be somehow figured it out, then, if you're gonna have some houses on there or townhomes or something.
Yeah, yeah, no, so anyway, so that's, I I'm not saying that that's what's gonna happen or what we should do. I just, before, before we do go into that and say spend whatever it's gonna be, is it, is it better to, I don't know, what what might, what might it cost for a block of asphalt on that particular stretch? Twenty thousand, fifteen? Yeah, so so do you spend twenty five thousand on a street that no one really lives on, sands one, one access? Or do you spend that in developing opportunity long term?
I think, I'm not sure to use the name as mean.
Oh, no, that's exactly.
So uh I think he's, he's talked about this kind of stuff on and off on that property. On, he he owns, he just owns the property to, him, he just owns the property to the south of the library. He's talked about doing something on on there, and I I don't know what, I don't know what fish he's frying today or what game he's got going, but he's, you know, he's always got something. So it's probably be before we took, you know, I I don't think it's a bad thing to get prices on the blacktop before we go ahead and do something. Uh if 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 two months after we do something, and then he comes in a petition to vacate that street because he wants to do some kind of development, then we'll be scratching their head wondering, you know.
And he is the only property owner that would have an exhibition. So.
Well, there's an alley there that goes.
Well, right, no, but I'm talking about the actual hill portion, so that lower portion you would probably still use as a rear parking access for whatever kind of situation you develop. So you would, you'd probably still have a block there to the alley and to parking access.
But, yeah, I guess that's when you stand it up, under that scenario, yeah, you, that last, that first half or last half or whatever you want to call it, between ninety three and and that alley, you didn't, the city would have to keep that open, you you probably wouldn't need a, however wide that street is now, you probably could narrow it up by uh twenty five percent, you know.
Yeah, and I think with the utility lines are on, they're like long here too, I'll tell you.
Right, yeah, so you could probably figure something out to narrow, so you still, you still want to do something with that, with that street, and now would be a good time to end, that's, I think, all of this, what this does is it kicks, it kicks it in the pants a little bit to say what's, what's gonna happen with this property and.
Well, yeah, I mean, you you've got a developer who owns that piece, and are you gonna do something with it, you know, we're talking about. So.
Yeah, I think that should be brought to his attention.
Yeah.
Before we. One of the papers coming, put it that way.
Well, they'll come as soon as they can, I mean, uh once the road re-sixty come up, early May.
So we got some time.
Yeah, yeah, we got, we got sixty day, I mean, we got a, we got a little bit of time, but uh and even if we add it to that contract, even if we don't do it right exactly, you say it's gonna be cheaper, but uh WW is the sub, so whatever his name is, he's, Kurt is, Kurt's pretty open to doing whatever too, I mean, so if if we didn't do it exactly the same day, we did whatever, and we ended up saying we could keep it in that, in that uh project, I don't think, I don't think Kurt would uh would 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 change anything, I mean, I think he still allows us to to keep that price, I think. But again, that, I'm way, top out of my hat probably there too, in the sense, I don't know what's, what's blacktop done since uh the last, what's blacktop done?
I don't know, I'll just see what the oil.
Same thing as your gas prices.
Probably, I suppose. It's got oil, so it's. But the blacktop for this project is already good, right?
Right, right, well, that's assuming that we add it in as a, as a, as a, as an add-on, as a change order, as an over. Yeah, you'd have to do it, you'd have to go that route, that's where, if you did, if you did it as a separate, as a separate thing, then then they could charge, then you, then you may as well get it out.
But I know there's people thinking, you know, we should have like a retirement type home someplace in this town too, you know, I mean.
Yeah, no, no, that's, it's it's a, it's a wonderful piece of property, when you consider Orangey's old lot, the street, and then what Tim owns, it it it's a wonderful piece because it's a walkable piece of property to downtown, and it actually has, because it's on the hillside, it has a, and a valley view on the backside. And so it it really is a nice piece of property, but, you know, it takes a developer to develop that idea into reality, so. And ideas are worth, you know, twenty bucks, it's the execution that creates the value, so. Yep, but yeah, if he's like, yeah, no, I'm already doing this idea, no interest in the next five, ten years, then that's, it becomes an easy thing. You know, but if all of a sudden this conversation first maybe shift focus, then, you know, great opportunity for the city to take advantage of it.
Well, it doesn't necessarily have to be him either.
Well, he, yeah, he owns the the one piece, but yeah.
Right, but he doesn't own the street.
Nope, nope.
Nor Orangey's.
Well, he would own half, but if the street vacates, it goes half of here.
I don't know who owns that other piece.
So it's over the seventy foot wide street, the city, you can't, you can't sell the public part of it, if you vacate it half, it goes half of now, so he would get thirty five and we would give thirty five. Unless, well, not saying, otherwise the city would have to take the public bodies, city or whatever, if you, if an E D A or whatever gets formed, a a public body would have, or a public body could pick it on, yeah, it's, so you would have a seventy by.
Hey, that's your uh first project, right there. There you go.
But it's a matter of, yeah, that's, well, that's eighty foot wide street, so it'd be eighty, you'd, you'd have eighty by uh one forty along to the alley. You could take the alley if you wanted to, you'd have eighty by one sixty.
There's a lot of people who use turn on that street, I don't know where they go, but I'd want community input before I voted to vacate it.
Yeah, sure. That's all, we got time. But, yeah, but it does seem like.
Can stir the pot for that idea to play.
So, okay. All right, anything else?
Uh what, do we have to do anything, I mean, questions and stuff with that Monday meeting, do we have to develop any?
Uh, no, I don't think so, um we're being, we, you know, it's a joint workshop with the school board.
Is it here?
Yes. You know, so.
I think I'll, let's see, we don't, I, Janet thinks she'll be off quarantine by then, but they're gonna have one person out, probably two. Uh some, so if we got, if we got seven, um I'm thinking we're gonna set up space, us here, and then down, and then down, and then they're gonna be on on that end, what Jeff's trick is gonna be, they pretty sure have got one zooming in, we might have two zooming in, his trick is gonna be to try to figure out how that's gonna work, but just, but he put, he put the day together pretty fast, so I was pretty, I was pretty, I was pretty, I was pretty amazed, uh we had uh our computer guy that switched their stuff over, basically isolated our city internet and our, and then that last stop, and the computers all communicate, but somehow that new stuff, the public, or the open, open internet, and he didn't figure that out until five thirty that there was no whatever, and somewhere between then and now, we ended up where we're back a little bit, or at least online today, and it was, and it will be on Monday, but it's opened up to where I don't think we're paying it. Then after that, we're gonna do.
So no, uh yeah, the the main, the main focus is to facilitate dialogue, see where things are at uh with them and and really, uh we have a vested interest as a community to kind of know what's going on, so, you know, provide input.
And then I'll get you, uh I think I sent you, but I'll try to highlight that information from our last conference review, uh some of the checklist, the new things, and whatever else that need to be talked about, we'll try to dovetail those in, as long as some of the league as long as some of the new league recommended policies and all that, so I thought we'd try to do policies and the league stuff and all that all at all at one time, and that's, that's why that that meeting's gonna get probably bigger than what it needs, but it, but it should be, we won't be able to get it all done, but at least, well, I think at least we have a framework to move on to the next one, to figure out what what we have to do based on what's going on with that order.
I'll be good, and we, uh, no, you didn't, okay, let's uh, we're looking for a motion in the revised meeting, so moved, got a motion second.
Second.
Got a motion second, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
All the same sign? Be looking for a motion with your.
So moved.
Got a motion second.
Second.
Got a motion second, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, here, thank you.